There you go.
Thank you, here.
Calling the meeting to order at 7:05. We will proceed with roll call. Calling the meeting to order at 7:05. Roll call is Gilbert.
Here.
Roger.
Here.
Jennifer.
Here.
Nick.
Here.
Rosemary, here. Flag salute. Roger, would you like to conduct the flag salute?
Oh, yeah. Oh, I would love to. Thank you.
Ready salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna go ahead and report out of closed session. The board approved the personnel recommendations as presented, and the board will be going back into closed session after the meeting.
Also, you approved the student readmission as well. It's on here.
Okay, we're gonna go... What do you mean?
Under A, the board approved the readmission.
Oh, yeah. The board approved the readmission of...
Student.
To the Selma Unified School District, FYE 22-23.
Perfect.
We're moving forward to the recognition of guests and visitors. Do we have any? School reports. Student representatives Adam, Charisma, and Mariah Flores will present information regarding activities at Selma High and ALMS.
At Selma High, over this past month at Selma High...
You got it?
Over this past month at Selma High, we had our homecoming festivities, which included our homecoming... our HoCo Jam Rally and Powder Puff Tournament, HoCo Jam Dance, lunchtime activities for our King and Queen Candidates, and our homecoming festivities on game night. The sophomores came out victorious for our Powder Puff Game Tournament, and the seniors won our class vote competition. We were glad to see so much of the community at our nighttime rally and game. Sports report. Bear Nation is approaching the last two weeks of the fall season. This Friday versus Washington Union is senior night for the football team. Next week, senior nights volleyball, water polo, and tennis. Bear Nation would like to congratulate Alumnus of the Year, retired SUSD teacher and coach in his 45th year of still coaching, Coach Hassel Henson. Coach Henson's loyalty to Selma Unified and Selma High School has surpassed one of the longest head coaches in the central section. Pep and cheer were busy with over 75 youth cheer performing at halftime last week, and this week, our alumni cheerleaders will be performing at halftime. Winter schedules will be released this week. Thank you again for all your support to Bear Nation athletes.
Thank you. We have Charisma?
Attendance competition. The ALMS attendance competition started today and will run until November 4th. The academic book competition consists of block classes with the highest attendance percentage. As of November 4th, will be awarded an ice cream root beer float party. While the school-wide competition states that every day that our school attendance is 96% or higher, the students will get a point every day. It's under 96%, Mr. Lane will get a point. If the students have more points as of November 4th, then both 7th and 8th graders' lunch periods will be extended by five minutes for three consecutive Fridays. Eagle store. Last Wednesday, we held our first eagle store of the year. Students will be able to turn in the Eagle Bucks Positive Reinforcement Tickets for prizes that range from markers, earbuds, to food items like ice cream chips, candy, and Rice Krispy Treats. It was great to see so many students with Eagle Bucks. Inner Mirrors. This week's students will be able to participate in tetherball, Inner Mirrors at lunch. Although this will not be a tournament, students will be able to challenge friends for bragging rights. Athletics. Our final football game will be this Saturday at Stanley Stadium, with games starting at 9:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m. Don't miss out. Volleyball and tennis have a home game this Wednesday starting at 3:30 p.m. We would love to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. You both did outstanding jobs. Much appreciated. Next, we'll move on to school reports, site administrators.
So can we wait till after the dancers are...
Yeah.
Okay, let's move it there.
Okay.
After public input. Yeah, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So you want to do public input?
Public input. Public input. Members of the public wishing to address the Board of Education on matters within the jurisdiction of the board but not on this agenda may do so during the public period for up to three minutes. Public comments on specific agenda items are heard under that item. For the public record, please state your name.
I have no cards. Do we have any?
Do we have any public input?
Okay.
Yep, moving forward. We'll go ahead and... Do you want the site administrator or the Mexican dancers?
No, we'll...
Okay, so we have the Mexican dancers here to present.
Yes, so Mr. Lane was so proud of his folklorica dancers, and they won first place at the Raisin Festival, and we asked him to come. And would you like to introduce them, Mr. Lane?
I feel like it doesn't... Isn't that loud enough?
They're not loud.
Good evening. Is this on? So our folklorico team recently competed at the Biola Raisin Festival, and there were five teams competing, one of which was a high school team, and ALMS took home first prize. So they're here tonight to be recognized and to give a performance as well, so enjoy.
Wow. Very nice looking. Beautiful.
All right. Awesome.
Go as far as you need to, yeah.
That's awesome.
Yo. She got it. She got it.
(music playing)
Kindergarten students or kindergarten students using the initial LPAC test, which stands for the English Language Proficiency Assessment for California. Only a handful of the students that were assessed were identified as initially fluent in English. The other students were identified as English learners, and they will begin their English language development instruction at their home school sites. At the end of each school year, all EL students take the state submitted LPAC to determine their growth in acquiring English. The results of these tests determine if a student is eligible for reclassification. Reclassification entails a score of a level four. So on this slide, you'll see it's one of the puzzle pieces above. So it includes that four on the LPAC, meeting the local assessment criteria, which for us, it's a CASP, meets or exceeds, or STAR. Also, it includes teacher input and parent input. This year, from September to October 5th, sixty-four students were reclassified. This exceeds the number of students that were reclassified during the entire twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year and that short timeframe. This may be attributed to our district-wide focus on our English learner program, the support of the English learner group, walking classrooms during ELD instruction, and gathering data about best practices. The success of English learners who have been reclassified is a celebration, and they're recognized at every site. It was actually my favorite part of being a site administrator, was getting to meet with the parents to share the success that their children had in our school system. Another celebration that I wanted to mention is the implementation of PBIS at each school site. This includes our full-time PBIAs who have completed their second district training. So I would like to invite Kristi Rangel up to share what we've done during those trainings. Both sessions were very well attended. You'll see a picture there of our first session. These are our Positive Behavioral Instructional Assistance, along with Jeter, learning all things PBIS and strategies to help support the schools. The feedback was very positive for both sessions, and we've already scheduled the next meeting. You know, during the last meeting, which was last week, the PBIAs really found the information that we talked about very powerful. And so one of the things that they had requested is that we meet sooner rather than later to continue the work on the strategies and building their toolbox to where they'll be able to support, better support our students at the school site. Kristi, did you want to share part of what we discussed during the last session?
Thank you. So what we're trying to work on with the PBIS aides is getting them to develop this team, so they know that they can go to each other if they need that extra support. Because we have some PBIS aides who have been doing this for a few years, and then we have a lot that are new. So we want them to feel comfortable and know that they can go to each other if they need that support. So this past session, we did discuss regulation, co-regulation, and self-care, because it is a lot that, you know, we're all going through. And so we really want them to know how to take care of themselves so they can be there to take care of, you know, the students. Another thing that we really did focus on, what's going well? What do we need improvement on? And so they were able to take turns and discuss what is going well, so they're able to learn from each other as well. What works at one site may not work at another, but what are some things that they can collaborate on and grow from there? One of the big things that they were just, they were talking about is just seeing the impact of the students and the needs. Because the needs have increased dramatically. And so just them knowing that they have that ongoing support within themselves, within their admin team, and then with us, they know who to go to if they do need that support. We talked about some strategies, and we're going to continue to grow to increase that toolbox. And so they know how to approach students with different situations and how to be there and when to reach out for help.
Are there any questions for us?
Yeah, Mrs. Hammond, I have a question. You said thirty percent are the English learner. What grades are those students mostly from?
That's a great question. We have, it varies based on school site. The majority of our English learners are at the elementary level because they're identified as English learners and then have to, you know, be able to reclassify with the different criteria points to then be able to change from English learners to what we call RFEPs, which are students who have been able to reclassify.
Isn't that thirty percent is a lot now?
On average, just depending on the makeup of the school district. You know, we were, last year, we were at approximately seventeen hundred English learners. And we did receive, you know, we did, with the incoming new students, we had two hundred that we tested. And so that has increased our English learner numbers. However, on the other end, we're also reclassifying more students as we go along.
Is there, as a board, could do anything better to have more better curriculum that we could work on? Or?
Absolutely. I think there's always room for growth. And I think it's having that renewed focus on making sure that all of our staff members have that focus and the knowledge on the English, the ELD standards, and making sure that the instruction that we're providing matches the criteria points for that.
Thank you very much.
Definitely room for growth. Any other questions? And we appreciate all of the support. Thank you very much for all of the support. Thank you.
Thank you. So next up is Dr. Catherine Catania. She's going to present the Community Schools Grant.
So as she approaches, can we sing a real quick version of Happy Birthday? Today's your birthday.
Happy Birthday to you.
Happy Birthday to you.
Happy Birthday dear Kitty.
Happy Birthday to you.
Breakfast in Disneyland with my grandparents.
What a way to end your birthday!
Oh, man! You should have stayed.
Oh, no! So you might be aware, Kristi and I are the ones leading charge for this. And you might be aware that the governor in this budget appropriated over thirteen billion dollars for community school grants throughout California. This was a model that particular schools down in the Los Angeles area and Oakland area had been doing some piloting implementing over the past two years. And the success of really involving the whole community with all their support agencies and parents and students and all the external support showed great progress for student success. So they expanded it throughout California. So, and in our area, most of our districts in Fresno County will be in the process of applying for this. Sanger has already applied for it, and Madera Unified, and they're starting their implementation of that. And then, like I say, some of the rest of the districts are applying for this. Selma, we took a team last week, Thursday and Friday. The Community Schools Network Foundation out of New York came and provided a two-day training just to lay the foundational groundwork. And there again, across the country, New York has had this in place in some of their schools. So they laid the groundwork of what are the foundational pieces so that everybody understands it really is a new community approach to supporting our students. And they're going to get the PowerPoint up in just a minute. You'll see it in a minute. Is, so it starts with, there we go. As you can see there, if you look at the base of the little green circle, it is, the child's at the center, but it's looking at not only the family, but also the community and everything from core academics, which we tend to focus on a lot, and then the support services that Kristi was just talking about, PBIS, and mental health and our clinicians. And then also expanded all the different expanded learning. So if, oh, let's see, start to say if they could advance. So really what the community school is, and just, we'll get to this slide in a minute, but just to give you a sense of the idea of what the funding is. Because a lot of things, we could do a lot of things, but if we have five hundred dollars, we're not going to do so much. But what this is for, it's to fund each school. We'll be writing so that each school will get their own grant. And it's based on the number of students at the school, ADA. And so for Selma, that will mean Selma High School will get, starting next year, if we're successful with the grant, which we will be, I mean, there's pretty much a given chance of that. But so four hundred thousand dollars for four years and three hundred thousand in the last year. And then the schools like Jackson and Roosevelt that are larger ALMS, they'll get about three hundred thousand per year for four years and two hundred and fifty in the fifth year. And then the least amount is a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand based on ADA for four years. So what it'll mean, the Selma overall for the five-year scope is two million a year, so about ten million dollars total. So if you think about, just, to me, it's easier to think about, so if you think about what could we do if we had additional resources at Selma High School around the four hundred thousand dollars figure to really look at what are the gaps in support that our students need? That may be because of funding, may be because restrictions on how we can spend our money. It would be things that would have been good for them to have? I'm surprised, because usually they can hear me in the next town. It's things that would be good for them to have, but a lot of times, funding's so restrictive, we can't pay for those kinds of things. So we've had our initial community meeting last Friday. We started to get together for conversations, the initial agencies that traditionally work with Selma, to start the conversation about what are the thinking about it? When can we meet? What are the other agencies we need to start involving? We need our teachers, union rep was there. Our classified rep needs to be there. And then focus groups, especially at the high school and the middle school, the students themselves. So we've started, like, just the initial gathering. But so, but as you can see, the funding is such, and there are very little restrictions on the how, who you pay the support to. So it can be, I'm just saying this, additional clinicians, transportation support, before school, after school, crossing guard support. And we know mental health and, but mental health here in Selma, we can't expect our kids to drive to Fresno, that's just not going to work. And a lot of the substance abuse prevention counseling, which typically in small towns, they don't want to come out to. They want, you know, you to go to. And it's like, no, because then we can even, you know, talk with other agencies that can provide support on the school campus. Because if you've got a student that has a tobacco addiction, a meth addiction, whatever, that, and we all know, the best way those kids are going to get support is if we can provide that counseling on our campus during their school day. Okay, so Kristi's going to talk a little bit more about, if I can get this thing to work, the organization of how to start thinking about how they want to structure our grant proposal.
So when we're thinking about the pillars, the implementation themes, we're looking at family support, relationships. Families and students are essential partners, not just clients or occasional stakeholders. Youth voice, choice, and leadership. And our kids are advocating for themselves. I can't tell you how many kids are, here at the high school alone, are advocating for services here on campus because they're, you know, my mom or dad can't, they don't have guest money. They can't take me to my appointments in Fresno. They can't do this, they can't do that. And so when they have the services here on campus, it's a lot easier for them. Collaborative leadership and staff, shared leadership to mobilize action and responsibility. Dedicated staff to ensure alignments and coordinations. So that is really important, as we have our teams and they develop here. Student-centered learning, inclusive and responsive learning. All students are seen, valued, and supported to be successful learners. Partners strengthen and extend and deepen students' learning. And integrated student-teacher support, proactive and responsive to the holistic needs of the students and staff. Strategic partnerships to expand resources and capacity. So we're looking at the whole child. That's what we really want to focus on, is supporting the whole child. And in order to focus and support the entire child, we need the parent's involvement. We need the community engagement. And this hits on all four of them. And this is, this aligns with the pillars that we've discussed in the beginning with Dr. Shepherd. So this is really important and that we involve and collaborate and utilize all the resources and community supports to support the entire child. So our community partnerships matter. So this includes health services, academics, social services, vision services. Some of our kids are having difficulty within class because they, you know, they need to get their eyes checked, but they are not able to get over to see an eye doctor. And it's bringing them on campus to help support that. Data tracking, after-school programs, even before-school programs. Sometimes parents need that extra support there. Mental health, again, is huge. Family engagement and community engagement. So these are all the partnerships that we're going to need to really support the whole child and get them to where they need to be successful. And it's going to take the entire community to do this. Where all of the different services align, they collaborate, they work together to support the students' needs so they can excel academically. Because if their physical needs are not being met, their mental health needs are not being met, they're not going to be able to excel academically. So this is why it's so important that we bring all the partnerships in together.
We were starting with our initial meetings the other day, so we're starting. And Jill and Raquel are starting to ask the student study teams and the attendance review boards at each site. So the students that are coming that aren't successful, what are their need, what are the needs that you're starting to see? Or that you know historically, you know, over the last couple of years that we see? And for instance, one, I'll give you a one, was the student wasn't coming to school or wouldn't come till noon, and this was an elementary student. And when the student study team met and was asking the parent about it, it's because they had such a severe cockroach infestation in their apartment that the mom and the dad take, took turns staying up at night so they could keep the cockroaches off the kids. And then the mom would fall asleep, because hers was the last shift, because the dad had to go to work, and then she would fall asleep and not get up in time. I mean, and we know, those are real, those are the type of things. So this funding could be one that with a social worker on campus could go contact the landlord and demand that they do something about it. And if it's any kind of government or subsidized housing, that, you know, there's agencies that you can file a report on with that type of situation. And the government agency will seek further remedy from the landlord. So those are the kinds of things that we know our kids need. And like, you know, the classic is like the kid with a severe toothache. Well, he's not doing any learning in class. And then it becomes, well, who's going to pay to take him to the dentist? Well, what money do we have to take him to the dentist, right? Well, this is the type of, this is the type of funding that could have an amount of money set aside for those emergency-type of health service needs that aren't covered by anything else. So, so, so like I say, so we're starting to just gather ideas about what are the type of services that those are things that student study teams have come across, the attendance people have come across, behavioral, all of our counselors have come across, and our community agencies out there. So at our first meeting the other day, I think we had about twenty people in the room from different agencies and our school district. And then we asked them about what is, oops. This is just talks about the money that I just told you about. And you can see on that slide, I know you all have a copy of this, is it shows the funding, what the funding will be that I just talked about. It's about two million a year for, per year for the next five years. And then they want us to work towards sustainability. And what I've always seen over thirty-seven years in education here in the Valley is when you start being successful for this type of money, other grants become available to you, because they know you're going to put that money to good use. So as we're starting to gather things, what's going to be our North Star? And like I say, it's always about the students. So hopefully, we will have increased attendance, fewer discipline. We'll have a better socially, emotional, well-adjusted student. And it all leads to more academic success. And as these students are going through their successful and then graduating at Selma High School and having their option to either go right into a college, a trade school, or right to work, whatever option they choose. So we're starting to ask the community partners, what are unique needs of our Selma students? Now think about for a second that each grant is going to be to each school. So Eric White might have some unique needs that Jackson has other needs. There'll needless to say be commonalities across all schools. But there's sure going to be unique things for Selma High School versus possibly Wilson School. And Wilson, you know, has a lot of our special education students as well. So every, every school will be helping write the grants for each school and the unique needs of those children in those schools and their parents and their larger community there. So we're asking who are additional organizations or groups or people that we can convene? And we compiled the lists at our first meeting. And you can see here, these were students and family needs that just the agencies that were there started to identify. And some of our school study teams, as well as Kristi, of course, is working with our health aides and the counselors and starting to gather up some of those needs from them. And then these are additional agencies, so I'd really encourage you to take a look at that. And email Dr. Shepherd additional agencies that you can think of that we can invite to these meetings that provide support. You can see it goes on, goes on here. And, you know, talking about health centers too. We had Parlier, United Health, although, you know, their main headquarters for this region is located in Parlier, they had three people at that meeting. So knowing that, you know, health, mental health and physical health are very important, we want to expand that opportunity. So, anything else? Our timeline is, like I say, we're gathering information right now. We'll start writing in January when we have our student focus groups, our teacher focus groups, our parent focus groups. And then the grant is actually due in March. They'll let us know of the award in June. And they actually send the money in July. And this is one of those, school boards like to hear this. This is one of the grants where they front forward, send the money. So hopefully, in July one, you get the first four hundred thousand. It's not a reimbursement. So at least, it's one of those grants that does not cause cash flow problems that some grants cause for us. So we'd be happy to answer any questions. And you can certainly, as you think of things, email Dr. Shepherd, and she'll get us that information. And we'll be sending you the next meeting dates of the agency meeting dates, and would love to have you attend.
How much is the total grant?
So the total grant will be for ten million dollars.
Wow.
Over five years, two million a year, over five years. With, like I say, if you look back to that funding sheet, the high schools, about four hundred thousand. And then ALMS and Jackson and Roosevelt are probably going to qualify for three hundred thousand a year. And then the smaller schools, a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand, depending on their size.
And it can be used only for the community partnership project? Where this money can be used for? Just only restricted funds, right?
They're really, at this point in time, other than they have to be legal, there's no restriction other than, you know, as part of the grant, we're writing the justification of whatever we're going to be spending the money on. But ultimately, it's supporting making that student more successful at that school site. And that includes their families, you know, things like if there were an emergency fund, although we know that United Way provides money if power gets shuts off or if there's, you know, a severe food shortage and for whatever reasons, they can't access the community food bank. There's some setup for emergency funds. But we're hoping, knowing United Way and the Community Food Bank and those types of things, that sort of, that already cover that area. That's the other thing, we're hoping to have more connections so that all the families are familiar with when they do have needs. That every school, we're assuming part of this is usually, every school has a social worker, and the students know just, and the parents to go see the social worker when they have clothing, power, food needs, those basics, because we know what happens.
So the social worker will distribute this money? They will be the one who will be in charge for the money? Or is it a school district?
Well, you, as a board, are responsible actually for the money. And so, yeah, and then, of course, there's quarterly reports that are written and then annual reports that are written that you are spending the money as you intended to spend it, yes. So it'll be the, the community as a whole with the school district writing the grant that will determine where the resources are spent. And then it's your fiduciary duty to make sure those funds are spent in accordance to that.
So some of the positions we have now, so not everybody has a social worker, not everybody has a counselor. So those are some of the things that could, you could see increases in those services district-wide. So there's a lot of possibilities of what we all be able to do for our families.
I mean, there's so many agencies out there that families don't know about.
Exactly.
And I think that that's an amazing thing to be able to provide for our families out there to provide that support, which then in turn gets those kids on campus. And, you know, it's just that whole cycle of, yeah, this is fantastic.
Yeah, so we're hoping if the, you know, the situation, again, like happened before with the cockroach thing, that, you know, that family would know immediately to access the person on that campus that's the point person for these and to hook them up with the right agencies. And, you know, and a lot of times, it's like, okay, well then, even like the food bank, we need to connect them with the food bank. But sometimes parents, a lot of times, they don't have car or gas money or whatever to get it. Then, you know, it could be the connection to go get them some emergency food or diapers or formula or what, especially with our little ones, that type of thing.
Just provide, again, providing those lists of available services.
I've received earlier this year, when before school started, two emails from parents that needed help. And so I forwarded them to Kristi, and they needed clothing and shoes and so on. And we rallied to get that done. So it's going to be nice to have that at each site that they feel comfortable.
Have we ever thought of that our different sites providing some sort of food pantry or clothing pantry? I just, just out of curiosity, just since we're talking about that, I mean.
Well, actually.
Well, actually, we are working on a closet here at the district office that our social workers are going to, well, they're working on expanding. We have clothes like at all of our sites, but we got some cupboards where we can get stuff washed and cleaned and organized. Because we do have a lot of students in need that are asking for clothes. A lot of them have been misplaced, or they're being placed in foster care. They lost their clothes belongings. Even just like backpacks and everything else, we want to have everything organized. So our social workers are working on that. But, no, I think it would be great, especially with, we've had so much loss with COVID. We've had so many students who have lost either one parent. We've had quite a few even who've lost both parents. So they're being taken care of by relatives. And so just getting them those resources and knowing that we do have our social workers to help connect them with that, but they are stretched. So by having this grant and the funding to be able to provide social workers for each school site would be amazing, so they can better support the students at each school site.
And as you said, you know, as an identified need with the space, you know, I could definitely see where we could, would talk to the community, the community food bank. And so maybe there is an area that the community food bank continues to supply and an emergency in between food distributions.
And even for the homeless student population, even just soap, toothbrush, I mean, some, just those basic essentials.
Oh, yes.
You know.
How about, how about tying into the parent clubs?
Oh, yeah.
At each school site.
And we're going to the And we're going to the, Rachel and Jill are going to the elementary and I'm doing the, the high school and Norma is, is helping with identified needs of the, of the Title One parent meetings, the school site parent clubs, those as well. And then of course, at the high school, we have all the different ag boosters, band boosters, all of those. So we're making the rounds with those too, asking them because, you know, kids, there, there's needs in every strata of, of the schools.
Yeah, those parent clubs are, can be a big, a big deal.
Yes.
I just want to say, I'm very thankful that Dr. Catania picked this thing up and said, I will take this for Selma and help organize it. And we have a grant writer that we'll be bringing back. She's got a connection and it's a small amount for a lot, so our next board meeting, we'll be bringing that forward. It's definitely, is a lot of work gathering all this together and so thank you, Dr. Catania.
My pleasure.
Happy birthday.
And happy birthday.
I always say it's, it's better to have one than not to have one.
Absolutely.
There you go.
Thank you. It's pretty exciting, you know, what the potential is, so. And I was at that meeting with the community people and that list just, we were all brainstorming so, but keep in mind, everybody's going to be asking the same community so members, so we will get ahead of them, right, Dr. Catania?
Yeah, and each, and that's where the parent clubs, as you, as you build them, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, amazing help.
Okay, moving forward. Thank you, that was a great presentation and very informative, much needed.
Yep.
So we're going to go ahead and, it's an action item, right?
Yes, so I'm on, the board policy and I just realized we had a little error there, but if this, I reworked this board policy language here and it's, the underline is new, okay? So the board policy says, the addition, District Administration will present student academic data to review at a Board of Trustees public meeting throughout the school year. The superintendent will provide annually to the board a calendar of regularly scheduled board meetings, listing specific academic data to be reviewed at the scheduled meetings. So this is a little more specific to what I had last time. And then, do you have the calendar? And so what we did was we pulled together a calendar and this is the data on what month you would see the data. So later this week, month, you're going, the next board meeting, you'll be getting mathematics data, where, what's the student academic achievement so far this year. Then in November, ELA, in December, we'll give you our attendance and suspensions and so forth. So you can read the calendar. July, we will look at our graduation reports and so forth. We'll give an update on, in August, our PD report, but then, by then, in September, you should be able to see the state data will come out. So what I, because I'm not going to be here forever and ever, this would be part of your board policy, you would recommend every month, every year, your superintendent will bring an updated calendar, assuming of course, things change and more information's needed, but that you would expect your superintendent to bring a schedule of the data. And at one board meeting a month, we would, they would go over that data, okay?
Yeah.
Are you okay with that language?
Yeah, one board, so one board meeting a month, yeah.
Yeah, is that okay?
Does anybody have any questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion passed. Moving forward, I'm really, I'm really happy to see that.
Yeah, me too.
Come to fruitation.
Yeah, me too, that's awesome.
I'm really excited about that. Next is approval of salary increase for all SUSD management staff.
So as you know, you have authorized us to negotiate with our bargaining units to provide a salary increase. We're still in negotiations with both Classified and Teachers Association. However, we are, we are recommending that we go ahead and prove it for the management staff, what was offered to all employees, that's one percent retroactive salary, one percent increase in salary retroactive to July one, twenty twenty-one, and then seven percent effective July one, twenty twenty-two ongoing, so a total of eight point oh seven percent? Eight point zero seven percent increase.
Does anybody have any questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. We're moving forward to facilities, Measure L, potential facilities projects.
Okay. So Ms. Wagner was going to be here this evening and in her place, it's me, so she was not feeling well. So we're going to give you a little update and I think.
If you would pass these around, Mr. Selma.
Oh, thank you. All right, so where do I push it? Okay. So as you know, you voted, we, we have Measure L is on, a school, school facilities bond is on the ballot November eighth. We need fifty-five percent of our voters to approve it and if you'll recall, our, our, what do you call it? I'm sorry, my brain just went blank. Our voter opinion poll reflected a very positive opinion of this. So we, there's a paid campaign, the commu, is really what we want to do is just start getting people aware of what, yes, on Measure L. We have a citizens committee that we're meeting this week on Thursday after five and we can participate, but it can't be during the workday, so our meeting is Thursday at five fifteen. And really what we're going to keep putting on our website and talking about is what can Measure L do for our district? So what, what the facilities are, the impacts it can be. So this is the information that's on the website. It just tells us what the, what the bond information is, what facilities and things, projects will be included in it. Our, so this is already posted on there, should, should, whoops, should it pass? Okay, so. So what we did, this flyer, and we have some, I think, over on the table, if anybody's interested in it, this is an information flyer that has been put together and it just shares with the community, it's in English and Spanish, what the goal of Measure L is and to improve and enhance schools in Selma. So we're talking, the focus is projects will support and include school safety and security enhancements. In fact, later on the board agenda, we're using some funds to improve our fencing, repair, replace old roofs, update electrical systems, that's a huge deal at Eric White, for instance, the whole motherboard's got to be replaced over there, not motherboard, but the whole, you know, what you call it. Also our inefficient heating, repair plumbing issues and improve and modernize learning environment. So that's what Measure L would be working on as well. Whoops. So the information campaign, what we're going to do is just keep getting information out on our website and in flyers and so forth, so people will know. We're going to, again, looking at improving safety and security, which the fencing project, and then we're going to be looking at new locking systems in all the sites. Again, the HVAC technology wiring, we've done a great amount of work there, but it continues to always be an issue. And then the estimated annual tax rate is sixty dollars per one hundred thousand dollars of assessed value annually. So one of the information, there is a cost to taxpayers for this. We will get thirty-six million dollars if passed to cost sixty thousand per one hundred thousand assessed value, not the property tax, not the market value, but what the assessed value is of your home. So again, if it's worth, your house is worth two hundred thousand, Measure L would cost a hundred and twenty dollars a year or ten dollars a month to help build and replace and improve our facilities. There is a cost to taxpayers, but also it's an investment and to improve and enhance our schools and having lived in other districts, including Clovis Unified, we, people pay a lot to live there and they, in Fresno as well, to improve their schools because that's how we improve them. We don't get federal, state dollars for facilities, so the community step up. So one of the issues that is really important, we have measure, as you know, we still have Measure O and we have an oversight committee. We're required by law to have oversight committee. Measure L includes the same ones where we have someone reviewing all of our expenditures. These funds cannot be used for salaries or benefits or pensions. It's really legally prohibitive to do that and really what, what the oversight committee does is to make sure that we're spending it the way it's supposed to be spent. We, when you, when the district passed Measure O, there was a gap in the funding, there wasn't enough and they counted on measure, state funds to fill in the gap. Well, state funds, there are no facilities funds at the state level, so we can, this will help fill in those gaps and actually some of our Esser monies has been really helpful in filling in the gaps that we didn't have before, but the only way we can continue to improve our facilities, classrooms, et cetera, is to invest through a bond campaign or through a separate bond measure. So we are open to talk to anybody about this. We have rules about distributing information using district materials and or equipment, so we are working outside, working within the requirements, so we can advertise that we are working on, Measure L will help support some of the needs in the schools, so we need to distribute that information. There's a Measure L and then there was, I think, this is not the, there was, this is not the correct one. We do have two meetings scheduled for the public. For the facilities master plan, they were on this, the sixteenth, do you have the current one that had the dates?
Selma High School Wednesday, October twenty-sixth.
And then, and then Eric White?
Eric White's on October eighteenth.
So on October eighteenth at six-thirty at Eric White, we're going to have a community meeting and October twenty-sixth here in Selma High School Dining Hall. At six-thirty, there'll be parent, community meetings, anybody can come in, talk about the facilities, what they want to see and that this money could be spent on, what are the issues and concerns. Teeter has already been doing site visits and going through there and they've been identifying things that need to be improved and it's a really comprehensive list of what staff have brought forward, so we just keep building on that. Based on that, then we would prioritize or the district as a board would prioritize what those are, so. Anyway, so Measure L, we hoping, if anybody has inform, has any questions about how we would use the money, but we definitely could use it to continue improving our facilities, so.
Anybody have any questions, concern, comments?
All right.
Okay, let's move forward to, to under facilities, award of bid for the Selma High School softball fields and bleachers.
Yes, that's me. I'm happy to announce that we received on September twenty-second, two bids by the three o'clock deadline. Of those two bids, Davis Moreno Construction came in at two point one million, two million one hundred forty-four thousand dollars even, and so we wish to move forward with awarding this project to Davis Moreno.
What is the timeframe to complete this project?
By February.
February.
End of January.
Before softball season starts.
In time for softball season.
Okay.
Yeah.
We got only two bids, huh?
Two bids, yes. We had six show up to the job site, but we had received two. But I, I will tell you, it was within our budget, what we, what we projected, so.
I'll make a motion to approve Davis Moreno for item two.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed to move forward. Three, awarding a bid for multiple site fencing project.
Yes, so also on the September twenty, I'm sorry, the last one was September twenty-ninth. On September twenty-ninth, we also received the bids for our fencing project at the multiple sites. We did receive four bids by the two o'clock deadline. Of those four bids, AJ Excavation came in at two hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. We did receive two bids that were relatively close, two that were much higher, on the much higher end, and again, it was around what we projected, so.
So this, this is the fencing, not at every site, but it's the fencing, Wilson, Jackson.
Roosevelt.
Roosevelt, because it had the short fencing in the front, so we're bringing that up. Now we'll be looking at all fencing and we'll probably have to go back around then, and then Jackson, it's all the way around and includes fencing off the, the.
Track.
The track, because right now that's all open, so the fencing would go around the east side of the track and that open area would be not accessible.
And along the back.
And along the back of the, of the campus. It was neighbors fences were the back portion, we're fencing along that.
Are you talking about the track? Actually fencing off the track?
Uh huh.
Oh.
Yeah, so they can't, so you, that's not open to that open space anymore.
A lot of people, a lot of people use that track for exercise.
Well, they'll have it open during the week.
They'll, yeah, it's just that it, during, when the kids are there, it'll be locked up.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah. So they, so then they would remove the fence that they have now, right? Right off the, the buildings? Well, if you're going to fence off, well, no, it's not.
We wouldn't have to, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
We'd just add it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we would just add it. So it's not all open, that's all not open. Yeah.
And I, you know, I would like to also say, after we've completed this, let's take a look at some of the other schools on the fencing like Eric White to, for security and safety reasons. I know when you go into the Eric White, you can just walk in and go anywhere you want and I just want to make sure that we took, take a look at that fence for safety. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Four, change order, number one, Mark Wilson Construction for the District Office Improvements Project.
Yes, during the demolition of the parking lot in the, in the backside of the district office, there was a lot of concrete removal that was not included in the original plans. And then also, in addition to removing the concrete, it was discovered we need to lower some utility lines and install G-five boxes as part of the project, so that brought up our costs. Oh, we're also adding the slurring of the front parking lot because that's in bad shape as well and for a total of fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-three for all three projects.
Any questions, concerns?
Make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. We're. Moving forward to human, uh, resources. One, proposal creation of new job description Director of People's Services and Principal Educational Options Funding Source.
Yes, Mr. Nellies. So, with this one, we are looking at, um, of a new job description. So, it'd be the Director of People's Services, also being the Principal of the Educational Options Program. That would be the, uh, Heartland Continuation Program and the Independent Study Program. So, with these, we, uh, created a new job description and then also, um, created this new position. So, this, uh, person would be in charge of both People's Services and the Alternative Ed Center.
And earlier this evening, where the, right, Mrs., um, Barhouse Reese would be appointed to that position. Just keep in mind, you know, that Mr. Badoya has resigned from the district to take another position. So, it's an opportunity to evaluate how we do business and make some changes internally to address the needs of the district. So, this is one of the, um, changes.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve C-one, um, A and B.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed? Motion passed to approve, uh, one, A and B. Two, proposal creation of new job description and new position Director of Business Services.
So, with this one, we are looking at, um, this would be a new position, would be a classified management position in the business services. That would be overseeing the state and federal programs and budgets, um, working with the school sites. Um, on, again, making sure that, following the guidelines of our state and federal funds and that, um, keeping, again, track of those budgets, that, again, things are being spent appropriately.
Is that a full-time position?
This would be a full-time position, um, it'd be an eight-hour position. So, um, with this one, we, um, it would be a person transferring over from a different position.
So, this position would also, um, be overseeing the state and federal dollars for special ed, which currently is not being done. So, um, Lupe Garcia is, was it being appointed to this position? She's currently doing a similar, not as comprehensive job, um, the same kind of thing already in state and federal. We would not be replacing the state and federal director position. We will leave that vacant, um, because of the reorganization. But prom- promoting her to this position to take on this, um, bigger oversight. And then, Ms., Dr. Wildman would be, is gonna be working with Lupe and Raquel to, uh, Hammond to, uh, interact with our, um, community and develop our L cap and then all the revisions. So, it's tied directly to ed services. And then, this position would report both to Ms. Affronti and to Dr. Wildman.
Sounds good.
Anybody have any questions or concerns? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed to approve, uh, number two, A and B. Moving forward with number three, proposal create new, creation of new job description and new position Coordinator Assessment slash Data Funding.
So, this, this position coming out of not filling the director's job, cuz Ms. Barhouse Reese is moving over. One of the things that she has taken on, uh, is really huge, is our assessment and data. And, um, running that and being in charge of that and overseeing that, making sure everything runs smoothly as well as our information in areas and CalPads. We really believe with our focus on data that we need someone really, um, that likes this particular area and also has the skills that to help us look at our data continually and to support our teachers and our staff at the school sites on how to address data. So, um, we, instead of the director position, hire, the recommendation is to approve this job description, Coordinator of Assessment and Data. It would be, it could be a classified person, or it could be a certificated person. Someone that really enjoys the datas and the numbers and assessments. And there are people out there that we are hoping to attract to this position. And, uh, and it would be used at, our L cap dollars would be funding this, be restricted funds.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion passed to approve three, um, A and B. Four, proposal creating additional social worker position.
With, um, the increased need of our students and providing services directly to our students, we are looking at, um, increasing, uh, our number of social workers. This would be us, be up to six, uh, school social workers. They're located at the school sites, again, providing direct services to the students, working directly with families, making home visits, and, uh, working with our students. Big focus on attendance this year, but also helping with needs of students that are, um, having difficulty in, in classrooms. And so, they are supporting our mental health clinicians and our school psychologists and our site administrators. So, this would be, uh, adding an additional position for our school social workers.
How many does this make? No, five, nevermind, I just saw.
This would be number six.
Okay, I just, I answered my own question. I just read a little farther down.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed to approve four. Five, proposal of creation and approval for four, three, new positions. Two, Assistant Lead Food Service Operator and one, Food Service Assistant. Two, and collapsed three positions, Snack Bar Operator and two, Food Service Assistant. One, Funding Cafeteria thirteen.
So, I apologize to the board and to Dr. Shepherd, um, I, on my wording for this one. I apologize upfront. So, just to clarify, this would be, um, we have some positions in our food services department, our child nutrition, that are currently vacant. So, this would be collapsing, um, three positions that are currently vacant and creating five positions of those. Of some of the ones we're collapsing, it would actually collapse a vacant position at a school site to create a position at another school site. That would be our food services one positions. Uh, would create an eight-hour, uh, Food Service Assistant two position. Uh, we would create a Assistant Lead Food Service Operator position, an eight-hour position. And with ALMS and the snack bar, it's really moved away from being, wait, that's the snack bar always thought of, you're just serving the slushies, that food. With their second chance lunches and, um, the food that's being served there, it's another serving station. So, changing from a snack, um, bar operator to an Assistant Lead Food Service Operator position. It'd be another eight-hour position, and we would, uh, be negotiating some of these salary ranges with our CSEA. Yes, that was, uh, my error, and as I was, um, kinda saying that, um, as I was going through the memos. So, it's actually collapsing three positions, and the positions to be collapsed would be two of the fir- Food Service Assistant one positions that are five three-quarters. But creating two Food Service Assistant one positions, they'd be at different sites. So, um, the positions that you'd closed, they were moved from Washington Jackson to the ALS, and they're vacant. And if you'd like, Jerry, I can send this to you in a more bulleted. I will share that to you, and that's, uh, my fault of my description. So, um, so it's collapsing positions, but it's creating more positions out of that and creating some full-time positions.
Right.
So, we're collapsing?
There's collapsing of three positions and the creation of five.
Okay, okay. Are they all part-time or full-time?
The positions that we're creating, um, we are creating, um, three eight-hour positions and one five-three-quarters, and collapsing, um, five three-quarter positions.
Oh, that's good, then.
Do we have any questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Six, proposal creation and approval of new job description Student Information Systems Technician.
This would be, um, with some of the changes we've seen in this year, um, actually, it's been over the last couple of years, and especially this year, with the responsibilities of our special ed technician, doing a lot of the work that is, uh, fits closer to the job, um, description of Student Information Systems Technician, but with special ed students. So, they're working with our Special Education Information System, which is called CACE, and CalPads. So, the person in this position has been doing a lot of CalPads work that previously had been in the Student Information System Technician position. So, there's been an increase in responsibilities for this individual. It's a different job description in that there is still assisting with the, um, office work of, in the special education, but assisting the teachers. There is a lot of training in this position, of training teachers in the use of the Special Education Information System. And that's where all our IAPs are being done. So, it's keeping track of, making sure information is correct, dates are correct, things are being done in the timelines and working with the Director of Special Education.
So, it's under Mrs., uh, it's under Jody, Mrs. Wayne's?
Yes.
All right, yeah, I'll motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, so the motion was approved, and we can carry forward. Uh, resolution FY twenty-three dash nineteen in the matter of assignment out of credential area for twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three.
So, at our last meeting, we did, uh, bring forward a resolution. And so, as we went back through our staffing, we're always looking at the credential areas. And so, in this one, um, this is for Jennifer Miller-McCombe, who's the yearbook instructor at ALMS. In the credential area, it does require a English, single-subject credential for yearbook. Jennifer is a multiple-subject, working in a block also, so she's teaching the Language Arts and Literature. And so, this, um, would be placed for the assignment for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year as one period of yearbook at ALMS.
So, this is, uh, I, I don't think I understand, this is, uh.
She was missed on the last resolution.
Okay, this, she's, that's still her position, right?
Yeah.
Okay, then.
Just, she was missed on the last resolution.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay. All right, thank you for that. Yeah, I'd love the motion for that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. She does a great job, I gotta, I gotta say that, she's, she does a great job.
Yeah, she does.
Thank you very much.
Motion passed. Motion passed. Uh, moving forward to Business Services. One, Kingsburg Truck Center, purchase of two maintenance grounds vehicles.
Uh, yes, so, um, at the end of last school year, we had two of our vehicles that were, um, from the, one from the maintenance, one from the grounds department, that were involved in, um, car accidents, which, for the record, was not our fault. Um, we are finally ready to replace those two vehicles. We would like to purchase a two-thousand-and-thirteen Ford F-two-fifty for the maintenance department and an, uh, F-three-fifty for the grounds, uh, because of their needs. They need a little, um, larger truck. Uh, we did receive, um, twelve-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighteen dollars from our property and liability insurance to, um, offset the cost of the two vehicles. Um, and, uh, the total for the two are eighty-three, that is eighty-three thousand eight-hundred-and-fourteen dollars.
You know, why are we not buying a brand-new?
Um, we, s- my experience in school districts, that we generally purchase, um, used vehicles. Um, I can tell you that both of these have, um, only, I believe, one has thirty-three thousand miles and one has forty-one thousand miles, so they are, uh, low mileage.
Plus buying vehicles right now.
Yeah, can't find it, it's overpriced.
Yeah, we were, we were very lucky to find a work truck, uh, with all the, uh, all the cabinets and stuff that the, the ground, the maintenance guys need already.
Make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Two, Carson Trailer, uh, purchase of two trailers for maintenance and grounds.
Uh, yes, in addition to those two vehicles, um, one, we'd like to purchase two trailers. One is a, uh, standard utility trailer, and that would be used for our maintenance department. And then, again, to, uh, improve the efficiency of our grounds department, a hydraulic trailer, dump trailer, uh, for those. Um, the cost for, uh, the two is sixteen thousand five-hundred-and-ninety dollars.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Let me just, um, um, do we do yearly audits, or are we gonna start doing yearly audits on all our equipment?
For replacement purposes?
No, just to make sure.
Or just?
Just to make sure we always have them, they don't walk away, they don't, they'll drive away, and end up somewhere.
Now, we, we have our, our transportation department has a very good inventory of what we have. There's, uh, so there, we're tracking them.
We could put Apple AirTags on everything.
Okay, moving forward, um, District Network Firewall Upgrade.
Uh, yes, so, uh, DataSec CrowdStrike, CrowdStrike Antivirus Protection Software is what, uh, we are requesting to purchase. I'm not sure if everyone is aware, um, LA Unified, uh, was hit by, um, some ransomware. And so, uh, it, and it's also very, uh, difficult to obtain cyber liability coverage, um, recent, lately because of the amount of ransomware attacks. They're now coming after, you know, government, um, entities. So, in order to build up our, um, our, uh.
Defense.
Defense, thank you, I drew a blank there. Uh, our defense, we would like to, uh, this is a renewal, um, but it, it's also for a more improved program.
Is this coming from the Wizards?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I'd love to motion it.
I'll second.
I just have a question, this is pretty expensive, though.
Yes.
Is that for all the computers, or just the main?
Yeah, it's district-wide.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did we, uh?
I second.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have a quick question, when's the last time you guys have gone to training?
Oh, Mark and I are working on that, we, he's got some ideas, so.
Yeah, cuz we need to keep you guys, um.
At the wizard level?
Yes.
Wizard, wizard is still sharp.
Yeah.
We gotta keep it behind the curtain.
I wanna make sure that we're always, uh, we're protected and, and they're always up to date on their training. Okay, so we're moving forward to Educational Services, I ready?
Uh, number four.
Oh, what's four?
Fire.
The firewall.
Firewall.
I thought we already did that.
No, that was, we just did.
We did number.
Okay, 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 District Network Firewall Upgrade.
Uh, yes, this is a, a second part of our, uh, our defense, uh, for our technology is new firewall equipment. Um, and this is also from our IT department.
All right, I'll motion.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is this a, once a year, or is it an annual, or is it one time?
Uh, so, the last time we upgraded our firewall was back in two thousand fifteen.
Oh, wow.
Wow.
We tried to do a five-year upgrade.
Five years?
Great, so we're due already, so, um, I can tell you a little background.
Go to the, I, uh. Repeat what you said about two thousand fifteen.
Oh, two thousand fifteen was the last time we purchased a firewall. Good evening, uh, Board President, uh, Alonice in Cabinet and Board. The last time we upgraded was in two thousand fifteen, and, uh, we, we just renewed, uh, back in twenty-nineteen, I believe. Since, uh, ransomware has went up, we're trying to secure the price while it's still low. After the LA Unified, everything's gone up. So, I was able to secure a price, um, pretty affordable, just to do a three-year renewal was two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. But I was able to work a deal with our, our vendor to get us a new firewall with the three years for a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars.
Oh, that's good.
So, saving the district almost. So saving the district almost a hundred thousand dollars.
Awesome.
Is there any sort of guarantee with these, as far as like if we do get attacked?
Well, we have, we, we got hit back in twenty twenty.
Right.
So a lot of our posture was refined, and our, our company breadcrumbs helped us, you know, make adjustments to our firewall, which we are taking over, and we're adding new features. And they do have, I know DataSec, which is our antivirus, they do have a cyber division, so if you need help, they'll help you, at a, at a cost, of course. But these two requirements help us with our cybersecurity insurance, so these are the requirements for cybersecurity insurance.
Yes, I was gonna add to that, so part of having cyber liability coverage, there are, I believe there's twelve bullet points that you have to, you know, criteria that you have to have in place in order to have the coverage, or at least the majority of them, and so we, we do have that. And then in addition to having the joint coverage with our JPA, our, our group, we also, the district has its own additional coverage specifically for us, because that's a pot. The other one is a pot.
Right.
And whoever gets it first.
Gets it first, it's...
Yes, so we have our own policy on that, so this will help us stay in compliance with the...
Realized there was cybersecurity coverage.
Yeah.
We already passed it, right?
Mm-hmm.
You had a set first and second, you didn't vote, you called for a vote yet.
I thought I did.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Educational services, iReady instructional research from curriculum associates for ALMS bed.
So I put this on as small, but we've not had iReady before, and I think you'll start seeing it more. Maybe Dr. Wildman can talk about what iReady is.
So iReady is an approved program on our supplemental list, and it's an online program for reading and math, and allows students to work at their developmental level, and it's adaptive, so as students get more and more correct, they get more and, more advanced. It has two parts, it has a diagnostic assessment and also personalized instruction. So it will support our special education students in accessing grade-level curriculum.
Alright, I'd definitely like to motion for that one.
I'll second.
Is it an action item?
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Purchase from Huffton, Mufflin?
Hooten, Mifflin.
Mifflin, Reed one eighty for ALMS ISP, Selma High School and Wilson Schools.
So a number of our students need accelerated reading instruction, and Reed one eighty is a program that has been proven to advance students two years in one year. So it is a tier-three reading program, and again allows students to work at their own level, but also to advance them rather quickly through the reading curriculum. It's designed for students who are at least two years behind in reading, and we have several schools using it. It is also on our approved list for supplemental curriculum.
Does anybody have any questions? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Next on the agenda, which was on the consent agenda, we moved up to the public agenda.
Yeah, action.
LCAP on, approval of LCAP.
Thank you. So invite Norma Bras Reesdowne to go through a brief overview of the LCAP revisions, and...
Good evening, thank you. Is it on? Okay, good evening, good evening, Board, President Alanis, Dr. Shepherd, Executive Cabinet. So I've been doing the LCAP now for, since it started, and I believe it's like ten years. So this is a first for us to bring back the LCAP for board approval. In conversations with county staff, there are lots of new requirements, both on the fiscal side and on the program side, and all of us that were working on the LCAP had some extra hurdles this year because of the newness of some of the pieces. And as school districts have been, folks have filed UCP complaints against districts, and as districts work through that, the county is working with all of us to ensure that our language is airtight, so that if those things come up, we do have something to stand on in terms of everything in our LCAP being approvable by the county. So just, oops. Good, it wasn't me. Bad, okay, sorry, it wasn't me, I was worried, I just forgot to turn it on, but something's wrong with it. Okay. So our overall goal with our LCAP is to ensure that we're doing everything that we can with funding that we have in order to prepare our students for college career and to be contributing members of our communities. Next slide. Some of the feedback, and every year when the LCAP is submitted to the county, there's always some back and forth between us, both on the fiscal side and on the program side. And this year, the fiscal feedback was additional data requested for budget tables that were a new item for us this school, this year. Request to align the budget overview, or what's known as the BOP, with our budget tables, those things needed to match. Requested additional, that we include additional state and local funds and federal funds when we talked about our total budget. And then that we review our carryover tables to ensure that that information was complete and accurate on the educational programs. The request that our data alignment required for some, that we align our data for some of our data points. Recommended wording for clarity and allowability. They also had recommendations regarding allowable items and positions in the LCAP, and I'll talk a little bit about that as we move forward. And then request for further clarification or explanation regarding semantics, data sources, and planned expenditures. So under Goal One, if you'll recall, this is where we're talking about all students reaching proficiency in English language arts in math, science, and ELD, is measured by both our local and our state assessments. There's a big chunk in the LCAP that addresses the core program, what we provide for all students. Then we did include some positions, such as the program manager services, assistant principal positions at Selma High School, a principal on special assignment, supplemental curriculum and resources. We added a sports medicine trainer position for CTE, and you can see the additional items that are in Goal One. The one that we, the county asked us to look at, and through their advice, we have split-funded the principal on special assignment, because some of the duties that that, that position will complete are items that are required, such as English language development services, EL services. And so we agreed with that recommendation from the county to go ahead and split-fund that position. The total number, the eighty-two million, is everything, including our LCFF dollars, our state and local and other federal dollars that help contribute to Goal One. This little thing here, okay. Goal Two speaks to academic and behavioral services that are gonna be provided to those students in order to close the achievement gap. That total there is about six million dollars, also including both state, local, not both, sorry, including LCFF funding, state, local, and other federal dollars. Things like class size reduction for ninth grade and at the middle school, transitional kindergarten, which we were advised from the county to just really look at what it is that we're funding for transitional kindergarten. We also funded math intervention teachers, which is a new intervention service we're providing this year. Additional mental health clinicians, for example, tonight you approved additional social worker positions. We brought back at-risk counselors for Selma High School, and then we provide for professional learning and access to equipment and resources to support social, emotional needs across the district. In Goal Three, we're talking about intensive services, so the students that might be getting intervention services but require tier-three services, these are the types of things that we were paying for out of this goal, and you can see it's just a little under three million dollars. We did add, when the board increased some of the special aid positions to eight hours, the funding came from this specific goal in the LCAP. In working with the county, they required very specific wording, because sped services that are required can't be provided with LCFF dollars, and so I had to work with the county to ensure that the wording met the expectations. We also have funding here for professional development and coaching services for staff that are providing intervention services. Last year, the district approved an MTSS program manager slash special education position. And in talking to the county, because of the special education piece of that position, they recommended that we split-fund that position also. We do fund our people services director and a district home liaison. We also fund a middle school intervention class, and we had funded the chief academic officer position. And again, in working with the county and their recommendations, we're looking at split-funding that position, because some of the duties are, types of duties that the district is required to, to have someone do in the district. Based on their advice, we removed the director of special education, because it is very specific to special education services, and so we agreed with that recommendation, so that position will not be paid for out of the LCAP. Goal Four is our parent engagement, family engagement goal, intensive supports to ensure, again, working with families and parents in order to help all students reach those high academic levels. Right, right at half a million dollars, more or less, for this one. Things like parent engage, parent university, different types of engagement, engagement opportunities around the LCAP. We're gonna, in November, we will be having our first community forum for the LCAP. And then also pays for staff that coordinates site and district parent engagement activities. So the, the LCAP is attached to the memo, and so we are requesting that the board approve the revised LCAP.
I'll make a motion to approve revised LCAP.
Do I have a second?
I second it. I have a question, though. What percentage of the students go to the college level after the high school?
Oh, I don't have that figure at my fingertips here.
Is it fifteen percent, twenty percent?
The percentage of students that go on to secondary, post-secondary.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go into the consent agenda, I was wanting to see if Dr. Pickle or Mr. Lane have anything they want to contribute to this meeting.
Good evening, President Alanis and the Board, Dr. Shepherd. First of all, thanks for having our folklorico team come and perform and recognize them. I could tell they enjoyed it, I enjoyed it as well, hopefully everybody else did also. Soffed the floor a little bit, but we had a good time, so...
Yeah, they did scoff the floor.
Our, our attendance competition started today. Admittedly, we didn't get off to a great start, Mr. Lane got a point today, and Mr. Lane's hoping to lose this competition. But I'm gonna give them daily updates and encourage them, and, you know, we can up the ante on the root beer float party, you know, we can throw pizza, whatever we need to do. Seemingly, when the Fresno fair's in town, I've noticed that attendance typically drops a little bit. But we're gonna continue to combat that as much as possible. Sixty-one percent of our students had a parent attend parent-teacher conference week at the middle school level, that's actually a really high percentage. So we were really pleased with that. And the first six-week grading period, eighty-eight percent of our students are currently at a two-point-oh GPA or higher. The twelve percent that aren't, we're calling them in, are at-risk counselor, assistant principals, and myself, and, and speaking to them and staying on top of that. But the almost ninety percent clip right off the bat, also very high, so we're happy to see that as well. We have our school-site council and English learner advisory committee meetings, the first ones of the year are this Thursday. Also, our first choir performance of the year is on Wednesday here at Selma High School. And then two more things, our No More Program, the one with the Marjorie Mason Center about healthy relationships for teenagers and pre-teens, that starts on Wednesday. We're gonna do that in our eighth-grade science classes, Karen Barkley's our science department chair. She'll be the advisor on-site that works closely with them. So all of our eighth graders will get five weeks' worth of, of lessons, or I should say five periods of that, and, and we're really excited about that, 'cause you, you see it on campus, not understanding what, what some of these relationships should look like, and being able to verbalize your feelings, and, and what to look out for, and things of that nature. And then lastly, we had academic council today, which is our department chair meeting, and, and it's always very candid, and, and the group is always willing to share with me and, and be, like I said, very candid. The last one I asked them was school climate, and I said, you can describe this any way you want, from your perspective as a staff member, or how you're viewing the students. And I'd say four to five of them jumped in, and they said, students just seem happier to be here than they have been in the past. That, that, the other thing, this came from our P department chair, that, that our students are more open to being, not reprimanded, but redirected with their behavior. If it's in a spot where, where maybe we need to be redirected, it's not a, a combative going on and on, a back and forth. It's more like, okay, I understand. And so that was kind of my general perception, but when we have the department chairs in there, they account for all of our departments. So that, that was really good to, to hear, and I think the other thing they echoed is that there's a real consistency on campus, so the students know, you know, when I walk out on campus, right off the bat, you'll see three to four people trying to adjust their, their gear, be, whatever they're wearing, 'cause they know they're out of dress code, and it's really cut and dry, right? There's, there's no, it's not personal, hey, you know, unfortunately you made a decision to wear that today, and, and here's the repercussion. And I think that that real consistent, when you know one hundred percent, if I do this, this is the consequence, seems to help out with that. So we'll leave it with that, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane.
Hey, and a nice shirt and tie, Mr. Lane. I love that shirt and tie. I love it, I love the colors.
Pinko.
Nice colors, man.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Great things happened at Selma High School. We are getting ready to kick off our first College Knowledge Week next week, with the beginning of having a FAFSA night tomorrow night, that's the precursor to college knowledge. Get the FAFSA into the kids' hands, get them opening it up. And then next week, we have the upward bound program from Reedley College coming in, and every day, they'll be meeting with kids to go over that FAFSA, to really encourage them to complete that, so we can get them to the next level. As, we had Dr. Buckley come and speak to our staff two weeks ago, and one of the things he talked about was in first-time college-going students, and that is a big thing in households that parents do not or have not attended college. Only five percent of those students are successful when they go to the next level, going to the next level. So it's very important for us to encourage that with our students. Not that every one of them are going to go to college, we know that our CTE pathways are very important. However, it is incredibly important to get them enrolled in that FAFSA and get them that information, so they know how to navigate that channel at the next level. That's the big thing, so they understand what college is all about, because we all know that's what drives the movie industry and the, and the scary movies, right, is the, the fear of the unknown. We always tell them, don't go in the door, don't go in the door, 'cause the fear of the unknown. But, and I think when we talk about college, and we talk about all the things, those institutions are very intimidating. I see Adam nodding his head, he says, yeah, they're very intimidating. The big buildings, and, you know, you think college, and you think really smart... The big buildings and, you know, you think college and you think really smart people, very intimidating. We need to break that down. We need to teach our students how to navigate those channels so they are prepared and are willing to go to the next level, and they see the value in that. Because some college is better than no college. So that's all part of our College Week, which we kick off next week. Now, we say it's College Week. That's just the kickoff. We plan on kind of dragging that out and encouraging more, because the week after that, we have our CSU Day. And we're encouraging more CSUs to come, visit on that day. We're really trying to drag the UCs here because it's important to get the UCs involved as well. But it will, hopefully, as we build this program, College Knowledge Week will turn into a College Knowledge Month. And that's the key, is to focus in October so those, excuse me, so the kids can get their FAFSA done, get their college application done, get input from those people working in colleges right now so their application is successfully processed at that level. Looking in the rearview mirror, Fresno Fair's going on right now. We had the 4.0 Night at the Fresno Fairgrounds, and we had one of our students, Senior Julian Ruiz, won a $3,000 scholarship at the Fresno Fair. So that was great. We took seventy students. We had ninety on the list, but send seventy students boarded the bus. So we had a big contingent. Wish we could have had more, but it was really great. And then, of course, moving forward, we have, as Adam talked about earlier, we have our football team. But, you know, football is Friday night at home. We're doing our first staff tailgate. So you're welcome to come out before the game at 3:30. We're gonna barbecue for our staff. And it's all about building, not just the team support, but that, you know, having times and understanding that your colleague that might work across the hallway, you never have that opportunity to talk to, that you can come out and break bread, have a meal, and, you know, at least talk about and support the kids and every time we can. So that will be happening next Friday. We will be barbecuing and start eating around 3:30, and you're all welcome to attend. Come out, and we will be right behind, we're barbecuing right behind the baseball field and eating in the indoors there in case bad weather comes around, but we know it won't, right? Bad weather right about now is ninety-five, so we'll be eating in the NPR. The goal, again, is to get everybody together and rally ourselves around our kids so they can finish from.
And they won a game.
They did. They won the homecoming game against Sierra Pacific. So it was awesome. Young kids, young team. We are building for the future, and so, but it was really great to beat Sierra Pacific. I gotta tell you. That's the district I was from. It's great. So I pointed to that one on the schedule. I said, "Coach, if you don't win any others, gotta get that one." Not that I'm competitive or anything. Not at all, not at all.
So, speaking of competitive, is your attendance rate better than Mr. Lane's?
We went and compared notes today, and I don't want to make him feel bad, but. So, yes. Attendance rate today was ninety-five percent.
Oh, that's awesome. Awesome.
That's great. Good job.
Thank you.
Can we invite Mrs. Salcedo?
So, Mrs. Salcedo, you're not ready for this, but I want you to come down and share something really positive about your site. She always has something positive to say.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Shepherd. Good evening, President. Thank you. I always want to say thank you for allowing me to serve the community and serve my students. Couple of positive things that have occurred last, well, last week was our parent club met for the first time this year. We had thirty parents.
Oh, my God.
And it was, that was pretty awesome. They had a lot of questions regarding safety because of the things occurring, you know, in our neighborhood. But I was able to answer the questions. One of the other positive things is I, too, am in on the attendance competition. We had the highest attendance rates we have seen all year for the last two weeks. Mondays and Fridays are rough spots. I don't know why. I'll get to the bottom of it, but right, today we were at ninety-four percent. Friday, we were at ninety-six percent. So those are the, some of the great things.
Oh, that's awesome, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
And, Dr. Shepherd, the school-site councils, those are still the safety committees also, right, for each school site?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Because I know everybody kind of thinks parent club, like she mentioned, but it is a school-site council.
School-site council, yeah.
So people want to get active with the safety. Join your school-site council. Or run for it.
Okay, let's move forward with the consent agenda. Items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and are acted on by the Board of Trustees in one motion. There is no discussion of these items before the board vote unless a member of the board, staff, or public requests specific items be discussed and/or removed from the consent agenda. It is understood that the administration recommends approval on all consent items. Each item on the consent agenda approved by the members of the governing board shall be deemed to have been considered in full and adopted as recommended.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda with the changes we made when we approved the agenda.
Okay.
I'll second what she said.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed to approve the consent agenda. Does anybody on the board have anything they would like to share?
I'd like to, President. I wanted to have, I know Dr. Pickles and Mr. Lane's doing excellent jobs. I spoke with the superintendent, they're concerned with the community, but what's going on, the safety and the student's safety and the parents. I received a few calls, and we really wanted to have the principals to take actions on these, who are responsible for these fights, and kids especially, and their parents. I'd like to see it, if you guys have a video on it, pursue to that, see what's going on. Community is really mad. I even received a call from another district, too. So they're saying, "Hey, what's going on in Selma? We want to be a Selma district number one." So I wanted really encourage that our principals and superintendents to be really, safety issue is the number one, and well as the city responsibility, too. So we need to work with the city PD, and we hired them before, and they need to take some actions to prevent this in the city. And our reputation is really on the top. Thank you.
Roger?
No, it was good when Nick said it was great. And just to echo that, working with the city, with the PD, Dr. Shepherd works with, our superintendent works with the city manager, PD. So we do work together, because I know there's a lot of misinformation out there. And I'd also like to say, me and Mr. Lopez visited some sites, and it was pretty good. It was awesome. The classrooms we went into, because we talk about teaching from bell to bell, right? And that's what we saw in the classrooms that we went to. Eric White was great. We talked to food service ladies, and they were awesome. And I always liked talking to them. They're awesome. Then we went to Indianola, which was great, and.
Jackson.
Jackson. Oh, yeah, Mrs. Choppa, yeah, that was awesome. All the visits were great, I mean. So we're gonna hit all of them before this end of the month, so. And we want to show support to all the principals. We got some amazing principals, man.
Yeah, really amazing principals.
We do. Dr. Shepherd?
So I'd like to thank you, Mr. Sahoda, for your comments about the safety. Our principals take it very seriously, and it was very disturbing what happened at our school last week. And I know that our team here, I know that Dr. Pickle and everyone here, and working hard to get to the bottom of it. It's not tolerable. It's not okay to behave like that in our schools. And then subsequently, having to, sharing it around the community as a badge of honor is not okay either. So I want to acknowledge that Selma PD has been an amazing partner in addressing the issues of safety. We talk quite frequently, and I, and new SRO here, Officer Gisar, is really a hands-on officer that has really, in building relationships with students, but also with the community. So it's important because what happens here is a reflection of what's going on in the community. So that's concerning. But our team is very connected, and I commend all our principals. I hear when it happens. In fact, I was onsite when that happened that day and heard the radios. And so, yeah, people reacted, and our high school staff really stepped up. And very commendable for them to engage and try to keep our kids safe, so.
Definitely. We need to probably looking into the more cameras.
Oh, there's cameras going up all the time, and yes, there will be more. We'll be looking at all of that, yeah.
And that's where the school-site councils, we talked about.
Sure.
Get some more money to each school site for those councils to talk.
So we had, also, Dr. Pickle was referring to Reedley College. Dr. Wildman and I went out to a summit out there one evening last week, week before last, and it talked about adult school and dual enrollment. And when Dr. Buckley from Reedley was here talking to our high school teachers about dual enrollment, which is another way, it's really the way that it's heading in education right now, where kids are duly enrolled in the junior college as well as the high school and getting credits. It's pretty phenomenal what's gonna be happening. And Dr. Catania's going to be working with me to bring forth a way that we can support our middle, our teachers in getting their masters so they can become eligible to do dual enrollment. And we already have two teachers that are, we have two dual enrollment classes going on right now in the high schools. So it's pretty exciting, and Dr. Buckley is a real leader in this area. He wants Reedley College to really be the emphasis here to move this forward. And so I would like to suggest that perhaps Dr. Buckley could come and present to the school board some of the information he shared with the high school principal, teachers. And it's very commendable. One of the reasons, when Dr. Pickle and I talked, and we met with Dr. Buckley earlier at the end of September, or whenever, first of September, I was so impressed at how our kids did when they went to Reedley College. And I wanted the teachers to hear because they made that happen. And so I'd like to have him come do a short presentation on what is happening at Reedley College and how we're gonna work together. And also, the summer, summer, spring semester, we'll be offering some Reedley College classes at our, at the adult school. So we're real excited about that. Our adult school program, Dr. Wildman's overseeing it right now, and as you know, Mr. Bedoya is leaving. And so as you did tonight, you appointed Mrs. Bali as our adult school principal. When we fill her position, she'll move over to adult school. But our adult school numbers are through the roof. I mean, we're real excited. It's the highest enrollment, and we're already running out of space, so we're having to work coordinate that. We'll be looking at doing some things at the adult school. Dr. Buckley's very excited about the potential of our adult school being a hub for Reedley College. So we got a lot of things going on that I think is gonna support our kids and our community, and it's pretty exciting. We had our first candidate board, I had my first candidate, board candidate informational night. We had four candidates here. It was great. Good people. We're giving them a lot of information. It's like drinking from a fire hose. This week, we do it again at 6:30 here. This week, on deck is Dr. Wildman and Mr. Dixon. We'll be talking about HR, and Raquel's gonna, Hammond's gonna be sharing our elementary programs. But we're gonna try to get everything to them, but they're gonna have a lot of information when they get done. But good dialogues, and anybody's welcome to attend, to observe. It's very casual, lasts about an hour and a half. If you'd like to come, Adam, that'd be great. We, you're okay? Okay, never mind. He said he'll pass. Anyway, so I did check on Adam, and he was at the dance instead of our last board meeting. So, you know. It's okay. Priorities, right? Yeah, okay. But we have a lot going on. It's always a lot going on. But I just, the, I think that our, the focus that we've taken this year, you can tell, and our teachers are doing an amazing job. They're overwhelmed, I know that. There's a lot, but, and we have, our kids are struggling, we have some kids that are struggling, so we're creating actually a new intervention class for Gen Ed because we have some challenges that we need to deal with to take the load off of our teachers. So that's gonna be rolling out. Actually, we just advertised it today. So we're seeing some of that, but we're really thankful that we do have the counselors that we have, or the therapists that we have. Dr. Chiang came out and worked with two specific students this last week and worked with our school sites on improve, and in further developing their skills as professionals here. So we're really excited about that work. So a lot is going on. We've had other districts, the county office see our new early intervention programs for special ed, and they visited and went, "Oh, my goodness, your programs are really outstanding." So, and those teachers have worked really hard. And in fact, Susan Kalpakop, our SPED consultant, is comes, is coming tomorrow again to make it, take it sessions with our special ed teachers. So we're giving a lot, infusing a lot of time to help them get their, keep their classes going, because they're all brand-new. So we're real excited about the work that's being done there. So we will be bringing back a proposal to look at in improving and increasing our safety, campus safety assistance. So we'll be putting the pencil to the paper about how do we can improve campus safety even more, just more eyes and ears on-site. So we'll be coming forth with something to address those issues. But thank you for the comments, and thank you for the support of our principals and teachers. We appreciate that.
Do you have a motion?
We have to go in closed session.
Well, don't we have to?
We had to go in closed first.
So we're moving back into closed session?
At this time, we will go ahead and move back to closed session.
Take, Rosemary, five-minute break?
Yeah.